Okay, good evening. Hatfield, welcome to the March 4th, 2024 meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order and as usual, open by reading our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield will be open to the public and shall conform to the open meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. In terms of announcements, two important announcements. Obviously tomorrow is the presidential primary, so polls are open here. Do we know what time polls open, Marlene?
I believe it is, I just looked at that the other day, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Polls open until 7:00 PM, so certainly encourage everybody to come down and do that. And then we have information about the USDA, United States Department of Agriculture grant funding that we had applied for for our water treatment, wastewater treatment plant upgrades. So the USDA did approve $2.4 million of grant funding as well as a 9.491 loan for those upgrades, and that is a low-interest, long-term loan. It's a term of 40 years at an interest rate of 2.875%. So we're certainly grateful to the USDA for that, grateful to David Prickett for all his work on that. Marlene, I'm sure you did work for that, and certainly grateful to Congressman McGovern's office for their assistance with making sure that we secure that. So that is going to be very helpful.
Congressman McGovern spends quite a bit of time in Washington DC, so yes, he was instrumental in that.
So do we have to, this is just a press release, this is just for us to sign, right? Okay. So we will be putting out a press release about that. That's a very, really big deal.
Just to be signed.
I mean, there's already been a pre-bid on this, and the bids I think are on the 20th coming in.
So thank you, Marlene, for, I know that there was probably a lot of work involved on your part securing that, and thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? No? Okay. Anyone here for public forum? Mr. Pease, come on up to the microphone.
John Pease, I'm part of the Agricultural Advisory Commission, and what I'm here for first is to say about these signs. This was found on Bridge Lane. It was affixed to a post nearest to the dyke by our DPW crew last year, and somehow it wound up off the pole and probably in the grass or in the field. A passerby that walks that area, I spotted one day, and I says, if you ever find one, you know, like this, please return it. And it was returned.
Nice.
The person says, very nice sign, and it depicts our farmland, or anybody's farmland. And if you go on that website, I think you'll find some well-named sources of funding, Kestrel Trust, Friends of the Reservation, Franklin County Land Trust, I think Mount Grace, only a few of them. And if somebody wants to donate and support farmland acquisitions, please do that. This ties in with the comprehensive master plan that we're working on. Our Farm Group Liaison Regenerative Design is holding a meeting at the American Legion Home on March 9th from 8:30 to 1:00, and we have a lot of people coming, legislative members, if they are able to attend. Several ag-related speakers are going to be present to help maybe lead some of our farmers into the next round of climate change farming. But this sign should not be, as I say, removed from posts. We're looking at funding. Talking to Marlene a couple times on how to approach this with some of our regional ag suppliers, and maybe they can help us with some funding or some other organization. But these aren't cheap. Phil knows signs that are missing and what it costs, and that's what we're here for. And like I say, the ag part of it with the comprehensive planning, we're trying to preserve our farmland. Thank you very much.
Yeah, John, thank you. Thank you. Hopefully you can get that back up. Anyone else here for moving right into our agenda? We've got a pretty full evening tonight. First is our consent agenda items, which are minutes from February 6th and February 20th meetings.
I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting notes from February 6th and February 20th.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Topic number one is some budget review. We're going to be talking with our treasurer collector. Thanks for being here. And then we'll talk about meeting with the finance committee later, so the floor is yours. Do you want to come up? It's probably best if you're at the microphone. Tammy, you should come up, too.
I begin.
You shall.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, those that are members of the board, town administrator and executive assistant, eagle-bodied cameraman. My name's John Clark. I'm the interim treasurer tax collector for the town of Hatfield. And sitting here with me is Tammy Wendelowsky. She is the assistant treasurer collector and has helped me out a great deal with this budget. Also Brenda Kerr, I'd like to make mention. And this is a, this is a pretty heavy budget for all the items that are, you know, the incremental budget items that belong in it, along with the treasurer collector's budgets, broken out by treasurer and collector individually. We've got health insurance, Medicare, debt service, and retirement assessment. So the larger portions of that total, a significant majority of this budget, as you can see, the budget is in excess of $3 million, $3,57,027.09. About 10% of that is the treasurer's budget, a little bit less. And a, excuse me. And I did want to note that it's a 5.6% overall increase from last year's budget, which is, we prefer it to be lower, but we have no control over the outside forces where it's health insurance, of course Medicare, and the retirement assessment. The debt is what it is. The debt is, let's see, what have I got here? That includes long-term principal, interest, along with the long-term debt, and our interest owed for short-term debt that's outstanding right now. I can discuss that a bit later on if you wish, or whenever you wish, as far as debt upcoming for the town. Let's see. Oh, also, I forgot, Town Integrated Software and OPEB trust, we also budget for that, which as it stands right now, it, I believe it's $20,000 in that budget funded for the last two years. Now, I do have a thing to say about the post-employment benefits. There was an upside to that, and seeing as I'm here on a limited basis, we haven't gone over the details with the administration in great detail, but I can explain them to you now. Our OPEB liability actually decreased by approximately a quarter of a million dollars, and I've yet to reach Michael Hoffman to find out specifically what that was. I'm thinking that, I'm thinking, it has so many moving parts, it would have to really, be hard to really isolate on anything. The only thing I can think of is that we actually have a trust that we're building on, and that does anywhere from minimally to significantly impact an OPEB, in other words, another post-employment benefits liability significantly. The more you put into a trust, the less the liability would be. Now, the liability, I'm sure you've heard in the past, is, it's not by any means an arbitrary number, it's the amount that we're to have at a point in time, let's say 2030, 2030, in a trust fund where the earnings on that trust over the course of the year will pay for the town's portion of health insurance. I'm not sure it's out to that late. Usually they've been going out to 2026, but I believe the extension is mapped out similar to that of the retirement system. Our retirement, from my previous town, I'm not sure what the actual liability, the full valuation, the full assessment for retirement is, and, but it usually goes out to as late as 2035 or 2038. OPEB has a tendency to follow. As I said, my previous town had a very early date, the late 2020s. I believe the standard is, and unfortunately I don't have that, is in the mid to upper 2030s.
OPEB shows up in here in this, where on this budget?
What, the, the OPEB trust?
Yeah.
The OPEB trust is the very top of the workbook, $10,000 a year. This is, I believe, the third year that we're investing in it.
So what is, okay. In this other governmental assessments and payments, what does that include?
Which ones are you looking at?
The treasurer collector budget?
Okay.
OPEB is a separate? Right. I got that. I'm asking a different question now. So this code 5690, other governmental assessments and payments.
Oh, that's for the retirement assessment. That's our annual assessment so they can meet their obligations to our current retirees.
Okay.
Which they take and invest in. I'm sure they have a date somewhere. It's usually pegged against the mass state retirement, which I believe is out to 2035, last I had, I had looked at that. So yeah, the $922,341 is to, is an assessment towards the overall liability. It's an annual charge. Previous year was $825,000.
Right. So I guess I just don't understand what's noted in yellow. Option one, to make one payment July 1, 900.
If you pay for the whole, you can make it in two payments, and there's an interest charge if you pay half in July and half in January. We generally pay the full amount at face value because it's a $15,000 savings, $15,000.
So that's what I can read here. It says savings. Okay, so the savings is $15,000 roughly?
Yes. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
No, please.
I didn't see it before tonight.
I understand. That's why I'm here.
What was the reasons behind the unemployment dub, almost trip doubling, like 170? Unemployment insurance went from $7,000 to $20,000. What was the reasons behind that?
I think that was our current budget line item was, the current budget for FY, oh yes, I see it here. This was, those were the actual expenses in 2023. That's basically a guess. What that is, is unemployment, we're non-reimbursable. What we do is we pay for the, since we don't get charged state unemployment taxes, SUI, we pay as we go. If someone is terminated or that we have to pay their unemployment, if the employee is, needs to be moved on from, and there's no clear reason for the panel for unemployment.
You understand what the line is. He was just asking about the difference, right?
Right. I'm asking about.
Those were the expenses.
What I'm asking is basically, is there a lot of employees that are leaving and filing for unemployment, or?
$7,000? I don't think so. Not for that year. But 20 has been the standard budget line item.
Okay.
Everything that isn't spent goes back to, goes back to free cash, goes back to the general fund and is a.
My understanding, it rolls over to the unemployment fund. So what isn't spent during the year?
As far as I know, is there an unemployment?
There is an unemployment fund.
There's an unemployment, there's an accrual of unemployment funds? I wasn't aware of that. I apologize.
So it's built up with the intent that if there are claims?
Okay.
So that insulates us if there was a.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that's been in place for quite a few years.
Okay.
The claims are coming from where? The school system, or?
I don't know. The treasurer's office.
It's both. It's town and schools. We cover, we, that this budget line item is for both the town and schools.
Right. We're just, I think what it is asking is where, like, to date, we've got 3,000 in unemployment claims for the current year. What departments are those, is that from? Do you know, like, is it, is it school, is it town side?
It's probably a blend, mostly schools, I think.
Yeah, I think it's mostly schools.
Mostly schools.
Yeah.
They have, there's a, you know, there's some turnover in schools, generally.
The accountant.
From municipal's perspective, there is turnover in that.
The accountant will be able to provide you with that.
They can provide those exact, those exact numbers of who unemployment was paid for. I can, we can actually garner that information if that.
Yeah. You can see what has been.
We can find out who it was for.
What the balances.
My, since I've been here, I've known of, I haven't known any town employee that's been dismissed. Schools might be a little bit different. We get, we get invoices from the Department of Unemployment Insurance, and generally we look at it, we have a, if it's, if we feel that the person doesn't deserve it, we have a firm that is actually a part of Maya now that goes in and argues the case that they shouldn't get unemployment.
Right.
Part of our, part of our agreement with Maya.
That is a service, well, that's a service that they do provide, but we didn't accept that service because there's a cost to do that.
So just getting back to the budget, if I could, so just for the benefit of people at home, I mean, the line items within this budget that show significant increases are ones that are really beyond control. The townwide health insurance, which is the insurance that we provide our employees, there's an 8% increase in that. That's a fairly large line, so 8% is sizable. So it's going from $714,000 a year to an expected $779,000.
I can speak to that if you would.
I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward. It's an 8% increase that's assessed to us. We have no, nothing we can really do about it, right?
I was at the meeting where they made the decision, and what it was, was that so much, the cost of health insurance has increased.
Right.
We all know that, and I'm sure. And what happened was the last two years, they've had to dip into their trust fund significantly. First increase last year was to try and build it back to where it was. Now they're, they're running a little bit in the red because of the high cost of medical services.
But our assessments have been going up every year.
They've been going up every year, yes.
And then obviously the Medicare budget also, just can't really control that. So just looking at some of these other ones, most of this is just pretty straightforward or nominal increases in things. Few lines even decrease, beta. We talked about the assessments. If you have questions on any of these, just type in here, but.
I just have a question for John regarding the health insurance. I could just ask him. John, you note that this number doesn't reflect any new positions that are being added. Generally, in the past, the budgets have included taking an average number, like maybe two or three new positions, just if that should happen.
Well, it, this wasn't, the increase wasn't related to an increased population.
Right.
Of employees. This was straightforward, you know, we need, we need to add more money to it because we're spending too much of our savings. We're spending too much of the trust fund, so we need to try and build that up, number one, and number two, the increased costs of medical services across the board are adding to that percentage. It's an 8% increase.
So that is based on current health insurance coverage cost?
Current cost and, and to, in part, and also to replace the reserve, the trust reserve.
Okay. But to Marlene's point, it doesn't include an increase if the town were to create positions that also offered benefits?
Or if anybody new should change enrollment to an accepted town.
Right, exactly. Somebody who's not taking insurance has, has the need to take our insurance. So you're saying normally that's built in to allow for at least a few instances of that?
Is with any budget, it's an estimate, yes.
Pardon?
Is with any budget, it's an estimate, yeah, in case we get more employees.
Understood, but is that estimate included in that number?
Yeah, I don't think it is.
That's just a straight up, that's just the 8% increase. It doesn't allow.
It's an increase, no, it's not. It's not taking into consideration of population increase, employee population increase.
So it is, it could happen during the year, right?
It could. It could, if you needed 10 new employees for something, or, I don't know, if 10, 10 people that were on our insurance decided to sign up an open enrollment, that could potentially be addressed in the following, in the following year. The only, the only time that you can have a qualifying event is if you're married, divorced, et cetera.
Right, right. So open enrollment will be coming up.
So you could easily have people.
That could be adjusted to the point.
Yeah.
You could easily have somebody decide not to stay on the town's health insurance and go off.
Yeah, we could.
But then you, you could have people who decide to enroll.
Absolutely.
And then you could have new positions created, or people even who fill, you know, if we have positions empty that maybe weren't taking insurance and now the replacement does, so.
Right.
Shouldn't there be an allowance in there for that? I mean, whatever.
On the health insurance page, you have just that page, I thought it actually did include like one, another individual page, not just the budget, you know, we have on the different towns.
That would be for us, that would be for us specifically.
I think that that one may have. I can look at that page.
I didn't see that.
I mean, I'd be curious to know what the cushion was added last year. Is it a percentage? Is it? I remember the treasurer had added a percentage.
Probably a couple, yeah.
To add that same.
I feel like there was, but I don't know that it's carried down or not.
Okay.
Tammy, it seems like it was a percentage added last year just to provide that cushion, so we should maybe add that percentage to this new line, not that I want it to go up anymore.
Could do that.
Right. I mean, it's a big line, but hey, to increase it, but you need to be reasonable. We do need to be prepared. That's what, that's what this whole process is about, right? I would, I would suggest that. And then the, the debt service is reduced, but then it's, then there's one line that goes up, or that is created.
Well, it's fairly flat. There was no, there was no short-term interest due. And for FY '24, it just had principal and interest payments for long-term debt. We borrowed $4,350,000 just about a year ago, and the interest, the interest is roughly between those two, between the two loans, between the total amount is roughly $213,000 for short-term. That's something that we didn't have in '24.
Right. So, but I see long-term principal came down a bit. Long-term interest came down significantly, but then short-term interest goes up. I, I mean, I don't, I haven't done the math on it. Is it roughly?
Well, you pay principal. If, unless you have a new loan, the principal will always go down, and the interest will generally go down.
Understood. I understand that. What I was asking is, I mean, I'll just do the math.
We haven't, yeah, we haven't, we don't have any budgeted for FY '25.
There's a little savings there, it seems like.
Diana, which page are you referring to?
I'm on page five, in the blue, where it's got long-term debt. I don't have that. Okay. I was just curious how the math worked out on that, that's all. Does anybody else have any questions? Greg?
No.
No, as you've mentioned, almost three millions beyond our control, and it's always sad each year where the state only allows you a 2.5% increase, but anybody else can increase by 8, 10%, and we get stuck with that. Then we have to struggle to figure out how to pay for it.
So this is a 5.67% increase?
Yes.
But again, it's not anything we can control in here. Okay. Which just makes it that much harder as we look at the other budgets. Did you want to speak to the tax title budget?
Tax title budget? I could.
This is what I got.
Tax title is generally, that is something that we budget annually for the attorney.
Right.
We budget a portion, a portion amount for advertising.
$15,000?
Yeah, that's not, it's not a significant amount, but we budget $15,000 for tax title service, and that's the lawyer that takes, well, he'll set up payment plans, he'll take our cases to land court.
Right, understood. Yeah. So I guess I was referring more to sort of the balances we're dealing with, right? So if I'm reading this correctly, Tammy, you would probably know this, this outstanding, this tax balance as of January 31st, well, that's 2023, there's taxes, $348,000 outstanding, plus interest and fees for a total amount outstanding of $687,000. But that was. of $687, but that was a year ago. So then it looks like in FY '21, tax title collections were fairly high at $415,000. In FY '22, they came down to $102,000. And then to January 31st of 2023, they were $110,000. We don't have information more current than that. Has anything else been collected?
Nothing has really been overly collected really since Patty's sort of been on medical leave.
Okay.
I mean, I have my payment plans that are coming in, you know, regularly monthly, but nothing big that we pursued yet.
Yeah, okay. Might be a good time, might be a good time to do that.
Well, that's, the tax title is a, is a particular problem now because eventually if the property owner doesn't pay, it goes to land court and foreclosure. And the way to redeem it is to have an auction and sell the property if it becomes a town possession. Now, that's been, that's been sidelined for the moment. I mean, you can still hold auctions, but any perceived equity, and we have no idea, state, the state house has no idea how to calculate what we, what needs to go into, into escrow. I suspect it'll be something in line with land at low value, if you're familiar with that, that way of.
Are you saying tax title takings are on hold statewide?
Tax title foreclosure sales.
Well, we've always done fairly well just with, you know, reaching out and trying to work with people. I mean, that's our, that's what we prefer to do, is just work with people, get these, get these debts settled up and, you know, we don't want to foreclose, we don't want to do anything like that, but we do have to pursue. I mean, when, I mean, as of a year ago, it was $687,000 of taxes we haven't.
I mean, we don't want to take anybody's house, we just want.
Exactly. We don't want to take that, but we do, you know, need to.
Once it's in, the only saving grace with tax title, once it's in tax title, it becomes a town asset, and that is deducted from free cash on an annual basis, depending on how much tax title is, how much outstanding current receivable still exists. Usually that's, that's the reason we do tax title, is to keep that from impacting free cash. But it's, it's, to, to collect it, there's, there's, there's only two ways. If the, if the resident is, is willing to, you know, enter into a payment agreement plan and make it over a period of years, you can go out legally for five years. So we've accepted the, accepted the, the provision for that. And, you know, it, it, you can, you can create successful payment plans. I've had success of that in the past in the other towns that I've been in, and they've emerged from, from tax title that way, by creating a payment plan, three years, four years, five years, whatever fits their, their budget. And again, it, it, it's odd to say, but it is an asset towards the town.
Right, so you said there's two ways. I assume you mean the other way with foreclosure.
The other way is foreclosure.
But there's a third way, and that is with the property transfers. So the town always stands first in line. Residents may not understand that. The town stands first in line even before any mortgage or anything like that on the property, so there really are three ways.
There's a scenario where there's a, you know, a significant amount of land, and there's a homeowner that the homeowner can choose to sell a portion of the property to get the taxes up to date. And not only will it get the taxes up to date, it will lessen the tax liability moving forward. So that's some way to support it in this day and age. It's, it's difficult now because of the way Massachusetts taxes properties.
Okay, I, I don't have anything else unless Marlene, Greg, Ed, anything else? Thank you, thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, so Marlene, a request from the Finance Committee to meet on March 14th.
Yes, the Finance Committee is requesting the Select Board to meet with them March 14th, and they're also asking if the Select Board would have their recommended budgets for that same meeting.
Well, that's only next week. I am not, and that's an evening meeting, I'm not available that night.
That is a Thursday.
I'm, I have something scheduled that night.
Okay.
And I mean, we won't have made final decisions about our budgets by then.
Hmm.
Don't we usually talk with them about?
We do. This is, this is, yeah, a meeting of their, well, it's their meeting.
Want us to come to their meeting, attend their meeting. I mean, I don't know if you two can go, I just, I can't be there. It's different, that's different than we've, we've done it in the past. Usually we all come together at some point, you know.
Yes.
I, I just, I didn't know about this. This is the first I'm hearing, and I have something on that night.
Yeah, they notified me last week and asked if, if the Select Board would be available.
Well, it's up to you guys if you want to go. I can't. I mean, you're a quorum.
Yeah, this is pretty important. I think we should all, all three of us should be there.
But I mean, that's, it's just short notice.
Yeah.
Is there a way we can just have them come to our next meeting? Is there a reason why we have to go to their meeting?
I don't know. I don't know. I can certainly ask them if they, I mean, I can call Daryl. Daryl is the chair now.
I know, I, I mean, I could give him a call.
I will follow up with him.
Okay.
And ask him about the night.
Yeah, just if he wants to give me a call, he can.
Okay. All right.
Okay, are you ready to move on, Marlene, to topic two?
Yes.
Topic two is to discuss the Route 5 water and sewer improvement project with Michael Oll. Michael, you are here, thanks for being here. Hi, Phil.
Good evening. So the primary topic is, as we discussed back last year, there was a need for additional funding, primarily to cover costs yet to be expended, but that are estimated to be necessary to complete the project. And those were of the order of magnitude of initially $330,000, primarily for engineering costs and police detail costs. We did go back after our first meeting and throughout the fall, refined the efforts and subsequently updated the estimated need, and that was at roughly $270,000. We've revisited that again and have been back and forth in conversation with the town administrator and feel strongly that that is really the current, still the current funding need. I believe a request, there have been some discussions with the MassWorks Infrastructure Grant Program about covering that additional need. I've been part of responding to some clarifications on what remains to be paid under the project. The police details have been minimized and estimates going forward reflect, you know, the two detail officers, pretty much for the duration of the construction work, given its location on West Street there, one on either end. Kind of shifting over to current project status and upcoming schedule, now that we're coming out of winter. The two contracts that are all related to the same project, the physical structures for the pump station were installed last year before winter. That was on the properties that the town obtained Eastman's through eminent domain. The contractor subsequently has put in the, leaving that pump station right by the bridge there to the south. The, they've installed the sleeve that the force main will get installed in. The sleeve essentially makes a separate standalone support bridge structure for the force main on the east side of Route, on the east side of West Street. So the remaining pieces for the contractor at that pump station site, which they plan to do this month and next month, is final connections of the force main piping through that sleeve and then installation of the, all the electrical work. And they also still have to make the final gravity sewer connection on the north side of the pump station. It's just that they left out that last little piece so that they could get the pump station in. So that should be completed shortly. None of that requires police details, it's all off pavement at this point. They've done the necessary lifting of the sleeve from West Street into place. So the other piece of the project is the remaining gravity sewer, starting from about House 41 up to where they ended coming down from the north side. There is approximately 1,600 feet remaining. The contractor's latest schedule that we just received last week reflects starting April 1st, which is when their DOT permit allows. I may be pushing them to start at least getting the de-watering system running sooner if the weather continues to be like it is, because the first thing they'll have to do is run that de-watering system for a few weeks, which is what we saw last year before they can actually start work. They expect to do, have two crews. They'll have a sewer main crew that's working northward, and as they finish a section, they'll have a separate crew doing the sewer laterals off to the edge of the pavement for the individual properties. They expect the sewer main and the laterals to be done early August. At that point, they will be cleaning up the site. The only thing that would remain is final pavement. They will be cleaning up the staging area at the town's well. Resident, the system would be operational at that point, at the end of August, and individual property owners could then make arrangements and have their connections done to the laterals that were put in by the contractor. Final paving would be postponed at DOT's request or their permit requirements is allowing 90 days roughly from the last excavation work. So that allows everything to still be done and cleaned up before winter of next year. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have. I know Marlene has been talking to, communicating to MassWorks in terms of covering or expanding the MassWorks budget to cover the additional funding need.
My first question would be, on this additional funding, can you sort of explain to the residents at home why there was these unexpected or additional costs? Because I mean, it's almost $300,000 more than what the estimate was, and it's, it's hard to explain to people because usually you have somebody come to your house, they give you an estimate, they don't turn around afterwards and say, well, you know, it's going to be another $10,000 for your roof. They, they sort of, so I, I need to help you, help us explain to the residents why this unexpected cost, because when we got to 1.5 million, we were so happy, we figured we had all the money for the project.
And it's not just the 300,000 or 270,000 extra, it's 2 million extra and 270,000.
And the short answer is, it's still related to the additional change order for the de-watering, the change in de-watering for the groundwater conditions, the combination of the groundwater conditions and soil conditions that they encountered in that area. So when we had met, this is back in '22, to discuss the need for the additional funds, the 1.5 million, we were basing that on an estimated change order cost for the additional de-watering work. It was not a final figure at that point, and it ultimately came in higher, not came in, but ultimately, once all the documentation was provided and we had reviewed it, the cost of that change order had increased. Town was able to sign that change order, but subsequently, the additional change order cost effectively ate into money that had been set aside in the overall project cost for the police details and the engineering services going forward. Does that help to explain?
Well, sort of, but it, I mean, it's still hard to swallow.
Because, you know, and, and I know we've been through this before, but the reason you hire engineers is so that you, you understand the scope of the project, and their, their engineers are supposed to evaluate whether or not the project is viable, and there was just a failure there. I mean, we thought we had a million-dollar sewer project, and we're now approaching, what?
I mean, one saving.
Four and a half million, five million?
The original budget, the original, it was a 2 million MassWorks grant and 1.6 local appropriation. So 3.6 million. The current with the 1.5 is 5.1 and three, call it the 300,000 on top of that, so 5.4.
Didn't we get an extra 2 million from MassWorks? That was the first grant, the first grant.
That, what, the extra from MassWorks?
The extra was 15.
1.5.
1.5.
Still, this project has, I mean, that's, that is, in my opinion, why you hire engineers to, to evaluate this, and I think that's what's difficult for us to swallow. Still, I mean, we've had this discussion, but.
So what MassWorks is questioning now is the additional cost, because we, we haven't even spent down the 1.5. There's still a little over a million still available in that grant.
I mean, the saving grace on this might be the fact that MassWorks did say they wanted to make us haul on this project, so they may, they may fund the additional money that's needed, but we have to show them that why that money's needed and, and the reason for it and why it wasn't estimated at the very beginning.
Right, that's, that's right, exactly, yeah. And then if I could just speak to the timing a little bit of getting started, I mean, we heard this last year that construction was going to start around April 1st, and we went months without getting started. So it sounds to me that if you're not getting started and staying on schedule, this could drag into another construction season.
Oh, that is not acceptable.
That is not acceptable. You know, the residents out there have been really patient, very understanding, they've put up with a lot. I want this done this construction season, paved by Thanksgiving when they close the plants.
I mean, we've been given a timeline for completion in June on this project, and that's what we're expecting. Nothing longer, I mean, it just.
Now he's saying early August. And that's assuming, is there some built-in in there for inclement weather and?
There is. When we have had discussions this, over the winter with the contractor about the slow progress last year, contractor brought up weather, which there really weren't that many rain days, I mean. many rain days, I mean, that delayed them. They brought up police details, but then when they gave me a schedule that showed specific dates of, you know, inability or a police detail canceled, it was less than half a dozen. It's not a big deal in the whole scheme of months. And then the other issue that is fully on them is they had to adjust and had issues periodically with their de-watering system, which is fully on their plate. And my hope is that they've worked through some of that and as we move northward, the excavation is not as deep. We are progressively getting shallower.
The de-watering system is just going to continue to work.
I believe that they now have a handle on what they need to do to get it to work so that they can continue to make steady progress and not have what we saw in the fall, which was they'd lose two days out of a week because it wasn't running.
So what, what do we have as recourse as a town if the contractor is not meeting expectations?
There's language in the contract.
Yeah. And their motivation right now is they're not getting paid anymore, no matter how long it takes.
Until it's done.
Until it's done. So that's probably the biggest motivation for them is they just honestly, and most contractors, that's the key, time is money.
So, and then in terms of the residents, I'd like, I'd like a couple of things because I do think that they've been really patient and understanding. I want to make sure that they're fully aware of this construction schedule. April 1st isn't that far away, so we should be having a meeting either with, with all of us or at least they're notified that construction is expected to start April 1st. We've, we've all heard the horror stories about the equipment being left, how unsafe it is for them to come in and out of their driveways. I want that mitigated as much as possible. And then I want to make sure that they're fully aware of the timeframe when they may be expected to be able to tie in, because I'm certain that most of them would like to have the ability to tie in before next winter.
Right.
So we need to make sure that they're aware of that timeframe so that they can line up their own contractors to get that tie-in done.
Right. They were asking for information last year about that, about tie-in.
I'm sure that they're, at the end of all of this, at least going to be happy to tie in to that sewer. So let's make sure they have plenty of notice because you can't just get a contractor there overnight these days. So they, and then, and then that schedule has to be held to if we're telling them to, you know, schedule someone to come in in September, October, whatever, to tie in.
So what I proposed or noted to share with you was getting written notices to, that we would hand out to all the property owners for the full project area, even ones we've gone past, just so everybody's aware of what the plan is for this year. Through completion and as you mentioned, being able to connect to the sewer and actually use, see the benefit. And then separately, continue to do what was happening last year is as we progress forward, identify even more specifically each particular property owner of a window of time, maybe several weeks, but of when they would expect to see construction in front of their house.
Right, be great. And they can't receive that notice the day before either. It has to be, yeah.
Want to do this all before they start this year so everybody has an idea of exactly what's going to happen in front of their house.
There were instances last year though that the, the resident was just received notification the day before.
Correct.
Yeah, we got to do better.
Totally.
Yeah. So you mentioned about the de-watering will be a lengthy period of time?
It can, that's just part of their nature.
Right. Do you have an anticipated date when that will start?
They have it worked into their schedule right now for starting April 1st. I'm going to be pushing them to get that started if we are past freezing, which we continue to get fairly mild weather.
And you think that will take how many weeks?
A week or two.
Are there other things they can be doing while that's going on?
No, not really.
Not even over by the pumping station or any of that work? I mean, that's off-street, you said, but.
Yeah, and they have, their intention is to deal with that with a separate crew. Now, that may change. One other thing I want to just highlight is, I was looking back through the police detail invoices and contractor works through the local police through Hatfield. And the rate, current rate for the police is 56.25 and that's for Hatfield and surrounding towns. So what often happens is if Hatfields can't fill the police detail slots locally, it'll go out to neighboring towns. They'll try to fill the slots. Ultimately, we do end up getting the sheriff will support it. And just to be aware, this sheriff rate is 67.10. So as much as those details can be filled locally, the better for everybody.
Marlene, any idea what the status is with this inquiry to Mass Works and what a?
No, I've provided them with, with additional information that they asked for. And my communication to, back to Mike was that, you know, they're still looking at what's available and would like to, I, I think, you know, do you have a projected cash flow for that remaining?
I can get that, we'll shift into what the final payments of the project will be for them into the next fiscal year, which may help them.
It, Mass Works.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Because there's still money available on that Mass Works grant.
That's what I'm saying, we, we still have a little over a million.
Right.
But it's remaining. We know what it needs to be used for.
Correct.
Right, we do, yeah.
It's not just sitting there.
We're spending it down, but yeah, there's still.
We're not paying the contractor until this is done and, yeah.
Now, we, I just processed an invoice. Apparently it must've got lost, but it was dated for December as a pay rec.
We did receive, just received last week, a pay application for the gravity sewer work for last year.
Okay.
Through the end of the year.
So we're going to pay them for the work that's done, but we're not paying them for any of the other stuff until the whole project is done.
The invoice is coming in so late.
That's on them.
Okay.
They don't want to get paid.
Well, while we're discussing this, in reference to the sewer, we talked about last year of waiving the hookup fee for residents because of the hardships they had, but we never voted on it. But we're getting closer to the point where residents will, should be able to hook up. So I think it may be next meeting, we actually have a game plan on, or a vote on, discussion on.
Vote on that last year.
I don't think we voted on it.
Do you recall that?
I thought we did, but.
I thought you voted last year.
Okay. Anyways, okay, so.
Completely, if we haven't already voted on it, though, we can completely open to voting on that. It would be really nice for them to know this far in advance, too, that they wouldn't have the hookup fee.
So as soon as the pump station sleeve and everything is connected down there, residents up to the point that the gravity sewer is done can hook in as long as the laterals are in.
Correct.
Yeah, well, as long as we're communicating with them.
Yep. So the other question I has is, I know we're all counting on some Mass Works funding, but what's Plan B?
Plan B would have to probably be.
Another funding source, you mean?
Yes.
Right.
Would have to be.
I mean, do we write an article?
Yeah, I don't know.
We still have money available in ARPA?
I was thinking it would be.
Free cash, but I have no idea what free cash is going to be.
Partially free cash. I'm, I'm not expecting free cash to be on that much this year.
Not either.
The funding sources left up in the ARPA.
I mean, I think this is all discussion for the whole, with the finance committee and everything. Actually, I think the money left in ARPA, what was that, maybe around 323,000 is what we had left?
Was it 325?
It might be 325.
Okay. That might be an option.
Not a bad idea, though, to think about.
Just a thought.
Okay. I, I don't have any more questions, just that we don't have, you know, not going into next construction season. And that we communicate well with those residents and mitigate any more of this garbage out there. Ridiculous.
Yeah. The executive assistant in my office last, last construction season received quite a few calls from residents.
Yeah.
Because they weren't, they felt they weren't being kept in touch.
And they weren't, yeah.
Kept up to date.
I mean, that's how I leave town every morning and I would go day after day with nothing happening there last year and I was, it was infuriating. So I want to see lots of activity.
And once they start, we want to see them there every day if they can be, weather dependent, of course.
Right. Understanding that, you know, there's days when that kind of thing can't happen, but no excuses.
Those are key.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know, do we do a pre-construction meeting with Gielher? Have them in here?
We should do that.
I mean, it wouldn't be a bad idea to re-communicate with Mr. Gielher that we would like to see this completed this year. I'd be open to that.
Yeah. Just one thing, if I could mention it, when, I don't think of the time last week, Mike and I talked, I had thought that the field representative services dollar amount seemed quite high, but what do I know? So anyway, we, we talked about that and I wanted to know if, you know, the field representative is here every day, the contractor is on site and is it a full day? And we also talked about maybe the option of the town providing.
Did you get an answer?
Somebody.
Because that is a high cost.
Just, yeah.
It's very high.
I, I, I wanted to know what his calculation, calculation or formula was for, for that.
Haven't gotten an answer. I'd be interested in that answer.
Well, Mike had indicated to me that he is, I don't know, he's here every day, the contractor's on site.
No, but it is based on, as a budget number, essentially full-time. And what we were able to do during the fall is back off from that. Some of the other thoughts, because it's really just covering an individual's time, was I had pointed out on the water transmission main down Rocks Road in Tessa, Ed, the previous Robuleski had stepped in and it's a much lower cost. There's no travel, et cetera. I just threw that out there as, is there an option?
It's about. Anywhere from 13,000 to 15,000 dollars a month.
That is correct.
Yeah, that would be nice to maybe try to mitigate that as well.
Yeah. I don't know. Phil, do you have any thoughts on that or if we, you think maybe we could provide somebody?
Looked at the numbers, I've had the same discussion with Mike about it and the only thing is that a resident going in there that Mike provides is taking all the ties. He, he's answering every single question that the contractor has. We had a discussion today about, I think that the resident just had, the resident engineer down there has to be more visible, communicating better with the, with the residents. I think that's a big thing. And I think that once they get a little bit more north, where there's not this cluster of houses, that maybe we can take a look at that, that someone else could be there. But right, but right now from where they are to.
Money to be there on site while they're working, no?
And they have been, but it's just, part of the problem is the progress is, is very slow because of the de-watering and stuff. So it does raises a question of, is it needed and is there a more cost-effective way to do it?
Right.
I would pursue that a little.
It was really, I feel, that the last part of this, when they started construction, they started a new de-watering, was a learning curve to re, to de-water that area. Because I went down there Saturday and Sunday a few times and the owner of that de-watering company was there adjusting valves. It's just not like you drive the wells and then start the pump. It's, it's, it's a science to get it right. So I think that they've kind of got the formula now because he wasn't spending Saturdays and Sundays down there.
We'll, we'll see come April 1st.
We'll see.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else, Marlene?
No.
All set. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kier, come on up. Marlene, did I miss this during announcement, these employment opportunities?
The circle back and ask you, I'm sorry, I thought that was, yeah, it should have been added under announcements and.
Okay, I don't want to hold the, I'll do that at the end, though.
I just think it's important.
We have quite a few available. Just for, if you're watching, at the end, I'm going to go through a list of some employment opportunities and some board and committee vacancies that Hatfield has. But because we have people here, I'll be respectful of their time. Dave?
How's everybody today?
Good, fresh off the capital planning meetings.
Yes, season, yes.
Yes.
First off, I want to thank Diana and Adam Sullivan from the school committee and John Wilks Jr. from the finance committee. And myself made up the capital improvement planning committee and make a plea, I'm sure you will later, but another plea to, we have another at-large seat still available, has been for a number of years on capital planning. Someone who kind of wants to get their feet wet, dip their toe in the, in the water about doing something for the town and being a, a representative. It's only, we had four meetings. We met once in December, once in January, twice in February. We're all done. Wasn't a big capital planning year, so it didn't take a lot. We did have the, the, the big players in to discuss things, but, you know, you're talking four meetings, less than two hours for each meeting. So if, if some resident's looking to just sort of figure out something to do, try to, you know, give a little time to their, to their town, yeah.
What the, what the committee does is look at all of the plans for capital projects, which are, you know, maybe construction or purchases of vehicles or things like that. And we have a whole spreadsheet that's planned out for many years in advance. It's actually an interesting process.
So hopefully you guys have all the info, you got the copy of the spreadsheet, you got the copy of the, the, sort of the narrative that we put together and you should have all that kind of stuff. The, just so you know, on the spreadsheet, if you do look at that, the projects under each department are in their priority order. Okay? So we'll just take the fire department, the administrative software would be his first priority, the replacement of his vehicle would be the second priority. There's a couple that are contingent and there's, there's funding sources sort of identified, but it's not set in stone, they're just sort of guesswork. And some of the guesswork is how much free cash is there and none of us really know. A few years ago, when we had a lot of it, we were able to knock off a lot of things the last couple of years. Hasn't been much money in the free cash, so usually try to take care of some little things.
We used ARPA funding to.
Used ARPA funding that time.
Take a lot of things off of.
Tons of things came up. There are things on here that don't require any town meeting money or any tax money. For example, when we do roads, milling and paving, that's all Chapter 90 money that comes in from the state. So that's all, all taken care of. There's some very large projects on here that unless we do something like we're doing now out on, you know, a Mass Works grant or something like that, that it's either not going to happen right away or there's going to have to be some sort of a loan program taken out to borrow money. A lot of it has to do with water and. A lot of it has to do with water and sewer, because some of our projects, some of our infrastructures getting quite old. Out on 5 and 10, north of Prospect Street, you're looking at water mains that are over 100 years old. And when those go, those are large dollar repairs. We're talking six figures to do that kind of stuff. We do tend to purchase equipment under what we call a lease program, and there's a couple of active ones, and there's another proposed one this year, possibly that could go out. And I believe the information from Phil was included in the stuff that I sent in about the current leases and what a new lease would cost for next year if you were to go in that direction. And then we'll just talk about the schools a little bit. The schools' projects are, again, are in their, what they perceive are their priority. So replacement of boilers down at the Hatfield Elementary School, and the roof are the top ones. Then there's a bunch of smaller ones down below. Some of them have to, most of them have to do with heating and air conditioning. There's a little bit on replacing some carpets with tile. There's a couple of large ones with parking lot issues that we've had down there for a number of years. That's all there for you to see. And then, just some narrative things about highlighting some of the things in each of the departments as to what's required. There was, I did, just a thing on the lease. There was a discussion that was had on last Thursday night at the Capitol, or the Comprehensive Committee meeting, that someone suggested that we should be thinking about, maybe not this year, but down the road, looking at, we do do some vehicle replacements, looking at electric vehicles. Yes, they're a bigger investment when you purchase them, but maybe we save some money in the long run, some of the fuel costs and things like that.
Are there any grants for-
That's something that, the person that I was talking to, I said, you know, if he believes that there are probably grants out there, possibly, and I said, well, look into that kind of stuff, and certainly we can, you know, bring that forward under their capital plan to see. I don't know what the company that we use for the leasing program, I don't know what their parameters are about electric vehicles versus fossil-fuel powered vehicles, but certainly something to think about down the road. A lot of municipalities are doing that, I know that for sure.
Yeah, I mean, I think that some municipalities have fleets that include just cars. We don't really have cars in our fleet. Ours are mostly larger trucks or vans or-
If we do do another Council on Aging van, and we'd have to talk to Jerry about this, obviously, but maybe the next van doesn't necessarily need wheelchair accessibility. If we have one that has wheelchair accessibility and one that doesn't necessarily, maybe you could save a few bucks there and not have to put all that kind of equipment in it. You know, the question is, do we actually need two that have wheelchair accessibility? Or can we get away with one and one not? I don't know. I have no idea what the answer to that is. Again, we'd have to talk to Jerry and the folks down in the Council on Aging to find out, but maybe that's, I mean, I know that our last van was a lot more than projected when the final numbers came in. So something to look at.
I personally think both of them being wheelchair accessible makes sense, just because they're doing a lot of different runs, and I can only imagine it would-
We do have the backup-
Be a stretch to make sure a certain van can go, you know.
We do have the backup that is wheelchair accessible, and I don't think that thing's necessarily going to go away. We could still have it as a reserve vehicle, so if it ever came up that there was some need or emergency for that, you know, certainly could be called into service. But just throwing it out there as a-
A couple of things I just wanted to mention, if you-
Yep, please.
You mentioned some of these have other funding sources, some are CPA funding.
Absolutely.
Which is, it is partially taxpayer money, but it's already been put aside.
It's in a savings account.
Yeah, it's ready to go. And then, in terms of some of the DPW projects that are on here specifically around the well and the water, further water extension up on Route 5, it's probably really smart to have those projects ready. I mean, the administration released their big economic development bill. There's a huge Mass Works component to that, so it would be smart to have it.
Get some of the design work done, some of the pre-engineering work done, and have what they call a shovel-ready project. That those are much easier to get funded than something from scratch.
So, I mean, you sort of spoke to this generally. Do you mind if I just run through department by? So for the fire department, and again, David touched on this, but I just want to, Chief Larity's first priority would be an administrative software upgrade. His second priority would be to replace his fire chief vehicle. And then his third priority would be to get a living quarters building, which would be necessary if the department does go full-time 24/7, as well as additional personal protective equipment if there was an additional full-time hire. So those last two are sort of contingency. And then for the police department, replace the oldest cruiser. He did ask for that last year, we didn't do that. The DPW has-
Those are about crazy.
Well, and that's the other thing, right? Everything you defer, you just end up paying more for. The DPW has a number of different projects. One is the day pond improvement and restoration, that would be CPA funding. There's been a lot of work in planning around that already. On the highway side, Phase 3 of the Elm Court Building, which would complete the building, and then a boom mower attachment.
But that would permanently move the town mechanic to the place on Elm Court, which would free up space up in the other building, where they could actually make sure all the equipment gets parked inside, especially in the wintertime. Sometimes we got equipment being parked outside because there's no room inside because of the mechanic's working on something.
Right. And then, for the water department, under the DPW, design and engineer the water extension on Route 5. That would be from the Chestnut Street Bridge to Whately, and then work on the Elm Asta well. And then, you mentioned the lease program. So there's, we currently have two active leases that are part of this capital plan. But then we would propose potentially a new lease that would include that cruiser, the fire chief vehicle, and then the Council on Aging van that is in their request. The Council on Aging actually has their van replacement as their number-two priority. Their number-one is to replace the floors downstairs, which are starting to lift up. It just never ceases to amaze me that we constantly have shoddy work, and there doesn't seem to be anything we can do about it. I mean, I don't understand why we can't, if a contractor put in a floor and it didn't last, why we can't go back at them.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's the same with the engineering and everything else. That's a black hole I don't want to go down tonight, but I'm salty about it.
As we should be, I mean, the thing's only a couple of years old.
It just, I just don't understand how work can be so shoddy and not last, and it's just like, oh, well, you just have to do the whole project over again. That just doesn't make sense to me. There should be a way for the contractor to be held accountable for that. DPW facilities, the pedestrian bridge over the Mill River, which would, again, potentially be CPA funding. Irrigation at Smith Academy Park, and the front porch replacement at the fire department. And then you very specifically already went through the schools, so I won't repeat that. But it's a big list. You know, some things aren't as expensive, some are really expensive. But again, I think a good example of projects we keep putting off, the parking lots at the two schools. I mean, the price is just skyrocketing on those. We know it needs to be done.
So it's either debt exclusion, you know, to try to do some of these projects, or, you know, another two-and-a-half override, who knows? It's going to be up to the residents to decide what they want to spend their money.
That's how I feel. I think we, for years, have just not asked, not asked, not asked. We have a lot of deferred, you know, projects like that. Maybe we just ask. You know, do you want to replace the parking lots? It seems like a prudent investment and a wise project to do. And maybe we just ask, and if townspeople don't approve it, they don't approve it, but at least we've asked.
I know we talked, actually, you brought up last time Treeworks money for, I see the HES freezer is 20 grand, and there's two LED screens. That's almost 40 grand right there.
Those are going to go in their profit.
Yeah.
Now, what about the school's replacement of the heat exchange units at Smith Academy? So that was a big priority late last summer, but I don't see that on their list.
It's not replacing the, there's a part, a certain part in a bunch of the different heat pumps that has to be replaced, that's failing. They've replaced a couple already, and whoever's done the work, I think that's the 70-something thousand dollar-
Oh, okay.
One that's on there that would-
HVAC upgrade, you mean, Marlene?
Not necessarily. Yeah. It's turned out, I guess, from what Dr. Driscoll told us, that there's a part that needs to be replaced in a bunch of the heat pumps that will give them longer life.
And I do think that they are looking at some alternate funding sources, pursuing some alternate funding sources, whether or not-
Anyways, getting back to my question, what I'm trying to say, if that HES freezer is in bad shape, and it's something that's needed, could we entertain looking at Treeworks money to pay for that? That's what I want to bring up. If that's an urgent need, I mean-
It's the unit that's on the roof that there's a problem with, for the freezer. It's not the actual freezer, it's the system that's feeding that to make it work.
Actually, what we were actually thinking at is the carpet replacement at Smith Academy is more in line with the dollar figure coming from Treeworks, replacing the original carpet with tile at Smith Academy. So we were thinking that would probably be the best use of the Treeworks.
There's more rooms that could be done. I think they put in for seven, but there are others that could be done as well at the same time to bring that number closer to that $40,000 or whatever it is that you were talking about. That would, I mean, some of that carpet in there is, when Diana went to school in the 80s on it, so, and I worked on it in the 80s as well, so. No.
Indirectly?
It's okay, Dave, we were both there at the same time. But yeah, I did walk on that carpet there. So that was what we thought would be the best for Treeworks, just because the dollar amounts match a little bit more closely.
Could do that in one LED screen, then.
Well, the LED screens are not coming out of the capital plan, that's going to be in the regular budget.
They were encouraged to include that in their regular budget.
Well, Dave, that was a really good presentation. It was a, it's a great group to work with, a lot of great discussion around these projects and-
Thank the department heads that came in to give us their rundown and prioritize some things, so. We asked them to come outside of their regular workday, so that's-
And all of this will now be pushed off to when we're meeting with the full Finance Committee and then decide when we have some of the other information about our financial picture.
With Diana and John Wilks Jr. being on the committee, they'll be great resources to, because they heard all this stuff, so they know.
Right. Great. And I just want to say thank you to David, because David keeps this committee so organized.
He does a good job.
I mean, the spreadsheets, he is on it, the minutes, the everything, really, Dave, you keep us really focused and make it a much easier process, so thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Thanks, you guys have a great afternoon.
Excellent, yeah, thank you. Okay, are you guys good? Anybody need a break? I'm good. I don't need a break. You good, Ed? Keep going?
That's fine.
We're going to keep going. Historical Commission is coming in for discussion of town-owned location for the artificial storage display education space. Artificial, it does say artificial. Okay. But that makes more sense. So welcome, hi Kathy.
Good evening, Kathy.
Mickey.
Hello, everybody. Nikki Sanderson, co-chair.
Kathy Olson, co-chair.
Historical Commission, not the society.
We do have representation from the society as well. And Amy from our commission, she's here tonight.
You know, all three commission members, I think you should just come up.
Come on down, Amy.
Come on, Amy. You're all three here, let's bring you all up.
Thank you. So the information I gave has a proposal with some rationale. I also included a formal letter from the society stating support and a broader coalition for what we need to do. And I did include also the memorandum of understanding that was signed by the commission, the society, and the select board for March 2022, as well as, for just informational purposes probably, but Mass General Law 40, Section 8D, that the commission is charged with. So that further ado, I did, during the December 16th meeting, make kind of an appeal to this board in public forum, stating that we are at a crossroads with where to put the collection at this point, because we are, and I guess I'm jumping down to the second one, second bullet point. The collection, and this is for townspeople to know too, is currently stored in leased space at 1350 a month in a private facility, not a town-owned facility, and that lease expires the end of September of this year. To date, thanks to Marlene, who gave figures, on December 13th, year-to-date to store the artifacts outside of town buildings has been $35,640. That's a lot of money. And then you can add the last three months for another $4,000. So we've roughly spent, as a town, from facilities, is that correct, Marlene? From the facilities budget, $40,000 in the last just couple of years, since 2019.
So it's 16,000 a year?
I don't know what it is yearly, but it's 13,050 a month. Yeah, 16, yeah, okay. Again, from facilities. So with memorandum of understanding that all three entities, town entities, well, one is nonprofit, but is to ensure the housing securing and ensuring of the museum collection of the memorandum of understanding that was just signed by all three bodies just about two years ago. Couple other bullet points, whereas the second-floor library and museum does not have handicap accessibility, so anybody in our community, townspeople, residents who want to work on collections, assist in family lineage, you know, on and on, or just see an exhibition, cannot get up to the second floor of the library where the museum is now. I want to mention that there exists right now no other viable alternative. We have spent the last three years exploring other avenues. It's not going to be a surprise that since CPA funding is going to be very challenged, year-to-date, it's already 29% less in revenue, the trust fund for CPA funds and the Commonwealth, because of the lack of home sales. That's where the money is put into the trust. So we can't depend on that funding for a large purpose of a building that the town doesn't own yet. And that was what we were really investigating the last two or three years. Couple that with the fact that just the price of housing, houses generally, has just skyrocketed. That avenue is really not tenable and probably not responsible at this point, moving forward. I mentioned Commonwealth Mass General Law 40, Section 8D. It charges us as a commission to preserve, protect, and develop all town historical assets. So we have to do that. And then I do mention that Town Meeting approved the existing elevator. Town Meeting approved CPA funding for this elevator, partial payment, as I understand. And I did write historical funds, question mark, because I believe that came from the pot. We have, because I'm on the CPC committee as well, there are separate pots of my- of money, housing, recreation, and I believe that elevator was funded from a historical pot, although I am waiting clarification from John Wilks on that. I think Megan spoke very well in the letter attached, that they would take any town building, including the second-floor space that we're sitting in right now, the securing of that building and, and or that space very seriously, and would work with all town departments, et cetera, to make sure that happens. The end of this little presentation is basically our commission and the society respectfully requesting the use of this space as we sit in it, all 864 square feet. We've been assured, assured by the society that this would be adequate space for not only storage, but the ability to move around and access artifacts, perhaps have pop-up exhibits, what a wonderful thing to have Town Meeting come and vote, you know, during voting day and have, you know, come upstairs and see X or Y or Z. That might be further down the road, but right now, the most critical aspect is that we have a lease that's expiring in September. And I'd rather not see one more dime of, of facility budget money, I'm sure residents would not either, go toward the kind of inappropriate storage of, of these items. And the lastly, I'd like to say that it's not ideal if they're stored in a private place. Most people who own places like this, either, you know, you're at the whims of any landlord, any commercial entity, selling at any given time, raising your rents when the lease expires or ends, and/or changing the use of the building. And we, we can't really let the collection be at the whim of a private owner. It's been great, it's worked out wonderfully, but as a stopgap, not as a long-term solution.
Do you, I have a couple of questions. Do you have a reason to believe that the lease wouldn't be able to be renewed?
No.
Okay. And I mean, I, I get what you're saying about the, you know, the, where we're renting could be subject to change. I think in this particular case, I don't necessarily see that happening, I don't worry about that particularly.
I'm sorry, you don't worry about what?
That property being sold or anything like that.
I, I just, I'm in kind of that business in real estate. You, you would never know, if somebody went up to Mr. Pachorik and said, "I'll give you X amount of money," you never know on any given day. Family things happen, just to keep, to put ourselves in that situation, I don't think is, kind of, I don't think it's appropriate. I just also don't think it's appropriate to spend money at a facility, a private facility, when there are solutions elsewhere.
Right now, they're, they're talking about fixing up the barn, right? I mean, there was, the Historical Society had put in a request for the barn, or is that no longer?
That's a completely separate matter, we're not talking about, well, first of all, and then, if you, well, fixing up the barn to make it acceptable storage for what we have at Diamondback, you'd have to basically build a whole new barn. It's just completely inappropriate. Meg, if you want to speak to it?
The Farm Museum definitely needs work, and we're, I'm the curator of the Historical Museum, these are, the Farm Museum is a barn, and it holds, I think it's appropriate for that. The items at Diamondback are textile goods, household goods, art, 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 paintings, that sort of thing, they're not appropriate to store in barns, even barns in really good shape.
Right. I, I would agree with that. And I, and also, that's just in a location that would be subject to flooding, which would not be good. So I'm not sure that, I don't think that that's the way to go, but
I just want to point out, as far as the elevator, there's a little bit more, I mean, the article that was presented at Town Meeting said to make the Town, the Town Hall ADA compliant, and at that time, the state had requested the town become ADA compliant. So whether the town got the money from CPC for the elevator, or went back to the taxpayers to get the money, they would still have to put in the elevator. I just wanted to point that out, that's all.
That's, that's all they could, that's, the, the reason I was bringing that up is not necessarily to go backward in time and say who did what and who said what, and where was that supposed to come from. It was more or less to highlight the fact that we have members of our community that cannot access the collection. And I think that's, that's the preeminent point, to me.
But they're not going to be able, you're not bringing the second-floor collection over here where they can access, so you're saying this is going to be storage?
John Peace did it at some point, so that, that, you know, his wife would very much like to contribute and help out with the collection. Not necessarily see stuff, but Johnny wants to speak to that, and she can't.
You'll still need the library.
Correct. This would be auxiliary. We have that many things, yes.
Would you require anything in this room for air conditioning and stuff like that, or using this space as a museum?
Using this space for the purpose that it's being presented, requested as
Which I'm understanding as storage.
Correct.
Right now, okay.
Correct. Storage of the items that are now at Diamondback, this space would be very suitable for that. The textile goods will store in this room prior to the renovation.
So this room is just for, you're using just for storage?
We use it for storage of everything that's in Diamondback, and then to Nikki's point, it would mean that those goods were, were artifacts in this building, and there would be a potential for the 350 piece downstairs to have artifacts on display in this building. It would be easier if there were people who were researching some piece and were wheelchair enthusiasts.
Previously, this was used as storage, and it turned into a dust ball up here. I mean, and, and look at this room space now, it's, it's gorgeous, it's, the floors have been done, and everything's been nice, and it's a perfect meeting area, and we're, we're hoping at one time, maybe a conference center, because John was already laid out, you know, screens and stuff for meetings and stuff like that, but, but I understand your issue, I understand it, and
When you think about the museum, like storing the town's collection, it's not the same as having it in boxes permanently, it's, it's a working collection, where there might be people coming in, we have people all the time coming in to look at artifacts from their family, or they're researching some history piece, or like a tire for a cloud papers that were exhaustively researched. So it's, it's not a sort of store and have it be away. I'm at Diamondback on a weekly basis, you know, I have really a small amount of time each week as the Historical Society's higher curator, but I, I'm in there often. Right now, we're working with, there's a researcher on a little bit of use coming in to look at some of the textiles, you know, it's not quite to that.
Okay, one of our most historic buildings is the library. I, I don't know why anybody ever wants to discuss trying to make that handicap accessible or, or go, I may, I mean, it came up to the voters once, and it was shot down. That was one reason they were looking for an area, because they thought they'd have to move out to come somewhere, so at that time, this space was available because it had no accessibility, so this place became the storage area.
You come to me as a curator and say, "Meg, what are your ideas for the town that you might, that might be great?" That's not this meeting, so, yeah, I think there are possibilities.
I mean, if there's options being looked at, I mean, there was, there was options discussed that never got thoroughly discussed, which was, you know, like a portable building coming in for, for like, like you Mass would use for a classroom, except their office spaces, in setting that up, or, or having something else done, there was a lot of other options, but you're looking at something that's sort of not expensive, right, for, for the town, basically, but
The memorandum of agreement, responsibility of town to house the collection, and, you know, my, my job as a curator is to advocate for the well-being and the care of the collection, and to think 50 years down the road, so that these artifacts that come from the history are going to be preserved or
That's the same way we look at it for 50 years down the road, if, if this space would be more of a conference setup or conference area or for broadcasting, because I know people enjoy watching this on TV or YouTube, and there's a lot of views, and there's a lot of people that turn on to 15, so I, the other issue, the other problem we got now is, we have to move the TV studio stuff from the high school over to here, and it's within the contract, so, I mean, yeah, that room was there, but then, I guess that's, that's another option, a TV studio there, and this becomes a showplace or something for the museum, or, or, or something like that, but I, I just, I just don't want this turn into another, after all the work's been put in, I don't want it turn into another dust ball.
This would not be a static space. And how, we've, we've kind of gone a little bit beyond the, the most necessary need to, to protect, and I'm sure you remember the little storage thing that was near the basketball courts that leaked, and we lost things, we lost things from Benson's when that was stored in Benson's
My opinion had been, because at one time, the museum was actually going to be up here under a design, and the town voted the money down. I always felt that maybe the best way is to go back to Town Meeting by ballot vote, and see if people want the museum here, and if they do, it's the town's wishes. And that's, that's sort of been my stand for a while, put it on a ballot vote, say, "Do you people want the museum here?", because if they don't, then they have to allow for another option for, for you folks, right?
There had to be some, there has to be something identified. I think that everybody on the society and the commission agrees that this is pretty much ideal, for the reasons you just stated, that it's beautiful, and it's accessible, it's well-lit, it has sprinklers, it has climate control, so there are things that are very appealing to this space, and it's prideful, I don't know, to me, it's also prideful, it's a, it's a, it's an opportunity to have people come up on a, basically, brand-new elevator and come to a beautiful maple wood floor with, with, you know, beautiful visions of the
Any other reason I, I've been for ballot vote, because it's been very divided in the community, there's been people that say it shouldn't go there, there's people that say it should go there, so I, I, in my opinion, I think the only fair way is to put it on a ballot vote and let the people
You know, particularly, you have, you know, we, we spend a lot of time talking about space needs and, you know, for the town just as a whole, and, you know, for all the reasons you just mentioned, that this space would be nice for your, the storage of your collection, this space is obviously also very nice as a functioning meeting space that would be used much more often than it has been, particularly if John is able to do the work up here, that would be completely funded through the Cable Enterprise Fund, at no expense to the town, moving a studio up here gives a lot more access to townspeople to be watching various meetings, whether it's us or Planning Board or School Committee or whatever, so we have to balance really, you know, the best use for the community, it, at the same time, I, I, I think I want to be perfectly clear that protecting the collection is, is a top priority. I think it's safe where it is now, I understand we're, we're spending some money on it, but, you know, you, you do have access to it. How much space up here, if, if you were going to use this as storage, how much of this space would you actually need?
This room is, is countable within, I don't know, within 100 square feet of the space at Diamondback. I don't have the numbers right ahead of me, but I will tell you that the space at Diamondback is full. If there is any, there were items in the front room, there were some old, there were maple chairs, you know, like, they were, they were rocking chairs that reminded me so much of my great-grandmother, and I just really wanted to recommend that we accept one of the collections. We don't have any mid-century, mid-century modern pieces. There's no room, like, there is no room. So that, even though they sound like, oh, yeah, this, if Diamondback, within a hundred square feet, that room, that space would be filled up very quickly, any piece comes up in the
But you also said that you're looking for the next 50 years, there's, there's no expansion here, once you come here, you're not going to be able to expand
That we pull together as two committees to make sure that the things that we shouldn't be holding on to, we're making a concerted effort to make sure there's no doubles or triples of things, Megan's, we have, the inventory has been done, at least the general collection, the Farm Museum is another prop, issue. I just want to make, clarify, just for the people that are watching or who will watch this, is this, I did measure this, this is roughly, and if you have an exact measurement, try
I don't know.
864 square feet, it's a very large room. The room behind us, the southern room, is 700 square feet, so combined, it's almost 1,600 square feet. That's a, that's a home, that's a house, there's a lot of room here. We are not, we are, we are very cognizant that, that, that the TV has, has to happen and should happen, I'm a big proponent for community television, so we're not looking to displace people, we're not, you know, here with a gavel saying, "We want this, we, we need a working solution sooner than later."
Is there, isn't there other space up here as well? That can't be used?
You got, the balcony would have to be fixed. The balcony is not, it would all have to be changed. Right, it's not, it's not structurally fit for heavyweights and stuff. So they, we've been trying to get a framing, an engineer to give us a framing layout, so we could actually come up with some type, what would it cost to fix that and make it into a space, but
I also think you bring up a good point, though, that I actually hadn't thought about, and that is, that if we use this for this community meeting space, it will suit our needs for a very long time. I think if you move up here, it sounds like you could very quickly even outgrow the space.
I don't necessarily say I would say quickly, I would say that one of the things that I think of time is that, that future possibility, you know, that sometime, eventually, the Historical Society is going to want to bring in mid-century modern pieces.
Right.
And right now, there's, there's no space for that. From the numbers that Nikki just said, it sounds like this south room would also be within the footprint of what is now at Diamondback. And so there's an option.
What if everything, I'm going to play devil's advocate, what if everything that's at Diamondback will not fit up here, while we're trying to work in conjunction with John, setting up a conference setup? There, there may be tables, there may be chairs, I just think we need to be very thoughtful in space. And I wanted to ask you, Meg, is, is it feasible to, well, we can look into it, but keep some stuff still at Diamondback?
I mean, you have to figure
Or
Potentially.
Or, or if we get too much, go back to Diamondback?
Every time we move the collection, we risk damage.
Right, right.
We want to move the collection as
Little as possible.
There is a, there is a possibility with the items that are at Diamondback now, there is a way you could shrink the space a little. There are, just getting into the weeds a little bit, curatorial, collections get things, high-density, high-density rolling storage, you can get shelf units, and they're about $1,200 a piece, and they, they basically would collapse down
Oh, I know what you mean. Yeah, I know what you mean.
Exactly. And that would allow us to use a smaller space.
Okay.
Diamondback may have smaller spaces available, if, actually, I know that Diamondback has smaller spaces available right near where we are, it is tricky, because we have a purpose-built double-wide door.
But let me just understand something, and I'm going to just call on you, John, to be able to use this as office or meeting space and conference space, we need the full floor, because you need to have the studio in that space.
Add that room controlled through electronics.
Right.
This would be the meeting area.
Right.
To not use this as a meeting area would make no sense for me to be over there, and me to be still downstairs in the closet doing what we're doing.
Right.
You did vote on September 19th to make this a conference area, and subdivide that room, the other half would go to the town to use as a break room for its employees, who have to have their lunch at their desk, or a, the other room. to have their lunch at their desk or a, the other room that gives you the refrigerator and everything else out from that other room.
And I know that there are nights when we need more meeting space here. Right.
Boards can, two big, larger boards can't leave at the same time on the same, unless they go down to the council meeting.
Right. And the lights shut off down there every once in a while.
So I think the session, they either end up in Marlene's office or they go down to the.
Right. I'm sorry, Meg. Go ahead.
It, it occurs to me, because I'm not as familiar with this building as many of the rest of you in this room, is there any other room on the first or second, no, on the first floor, comparable to that room? It's a big.
Unless you take an office.
Yeah, I mean, that's like, there, I'm just trying to think, you know, outside of the office, I'm trying to, you know, go, Mickey is right, the historical commission is right, we have a dead body, the town has a dead body against, against.
Well, but there's nothing to say we can't just remove that.
Correct.
Agreement. I mean, I, we're not getting a, a, an order to leave the space.
And Tim needs a 90-day notice whether the town wants to renew or move. It just, you know, so that's, that is going to come real quick. And if there are other, if there's, if there's other space in this building, fabulous.
I mean, maybe there should be a vote at town meeting of a, a choice for townspeople, if it should be the historical storage or if it should be meeting space and cable space. I don't know, I don't know what.
That's, that's how I feel about it.
I would encourage, I would encourage town, um, to, I mean, that'd be great, I love working at Diamondback, to want to build it. If the town loved it, there'd be no question that we, that we hold it in our pocket. If the town decides to renew the contract at Diamondback, that takes it down the road for year, two or three years, depending on the contract signed, the lease, the time it took, which is great and could give you time to come up with what you're going to do when this fall, when it's in your court again.
Is there, is there time, Marlene, to get like even, um, like a non-binding referendum on the town ballot?
Yeah, the deadline is sometime early April to the town clerk.
Because I think that would probably lead to more participation than maybe.
As long as it's at the ballot box.
At the ballot box.
If it's at the ballot box, that's what.
You're talking about on the elec, you're talking about the annual election?
Yeah, right.
Right.
Yeah.
There's still time. I can draft that and have that available for the board to look at at the next meeting.
The voters decide if they want this into a storage or a museum and whether they want it a conference.
Well, but it's not really a museum. And I, and I, that has to be clear.
No.
That it is not going to be a museum. It is going to be storage.
But it's not really drives, it's not really static storage. So I think, I think it's probably somewhere in the middle, what, what we're talking about if we're truly going to define what a museum is. And, and, but it's not necessarily 100% storage. Um, we're not, we're not talking about boxes piled up and getting all dusty. That's not how Diamondback is and that's not what this space would be. So it's, it's.
But it's also not going to be open museum space to just come up and at your will. So we have, that, it has to be presented honestly to townspeople. You know, for the, you know, it can say for the careful storage and appropriate storage, but it is not going to be a museum. And, 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 you know, maybe there'd be some pop-up things that can be rotated out downstairs and whatever, which would be lovely, by the way. But, right. So, I mean, the wording of it has to be on both sides. Would it be for the preservation and protection of historical artifacts? Would that be appropriate?
What, should I say that again?
For the, um, preservation and protection of historical artifacts?
Put the word access as well.
Access, preservation and protection.
But not, it's not public access.
Correct.
So.
It kind of is. There, there are researchers who come that are part of, not townspeople maybe.
But it's not open public access.
Correct, it's a by appointment.
The wording will need to be done.
Yeah, I agree.
Carefully, but.
Limited access.
Or, yeah, we'll figure it out, but.
I like that.
Yes, John?
Next points, let's start kicking the can down the road. What's the options next? There's a no vote, you know, John's the function room up here. Yes, where does the storage go then? Diamondback, another three years. 40 and point, 45, 50 grand again, okay? That's got to be, you know, sucked up. Where are we going to go with the collection?
And we'll have to have another plan.
Yes.
Well, after the people vote, then we get together and say, okay, let's look at options that have been presented before and try to decide on which ones. Well, the options before was actually fixing, one option was fixing up the barn, making it into two stories. Insulate it, heat it. I'm just saying, these.
It never was.
I'm just, you asked me what.
Never was.
You asked me what the options were.
Let him speak.
Let me speak. You asked me what the options were. I sat with a bunch of people from the Historical Society and the Commission and we went over a bunch of stuff. So I'm just telling you what the options were. Whether or not they're feasible, I don't know. I'm just saying. The other option was a possibility of bringing in a storage building next to the library so you'd have access there, like they do at UMass, which is, which isn't that expensive overall, and they're good for 20 years. That was another option. The other option was trying to go back to the voters again and say, the library is one of the most historical buildings, let's, let's fix that up and make it ADA handicap accessible. These were some of the options that came up. Now, there may be other, more options, but down the road, you're talking about a multipurpose building for COA and Fire Department. That might be another option down the road to put something in there. So there are options, John, there's always options.
Right.
It's what the people can afford to pay. That's, that's what the key is always is in this town.
And establishing their priorities of what they want to see the space used for. And then the other option is there is that storage space. Do you know how many square feet that would be if that was?
Oh, for balcony?
Yeah.
Quite a good square feet.
So I mean, that to me seems like having that paid for, just to make that space appropriate for the weight that would be out there, then we can do both things. That can be here, we can move forward with this, we have money from Comcast to, to do this studio work. It would be, it would, in my opinion, be a mistake to, to pass that up and not do that. So to me, that seems like the most feasible. Find the money to fix this so that that is safe and appropriate storage space and then we can do both things.
This engineering, now you know what happens, you were talking earlier, with the SIR project, engineering guaranteed work to be done properly.
Well, yeah, I mean.
Does it, well, it's, you know, it'll be a lot of something happening.
Right. No, I would agree with that, John. Yes?
I'd like to add something on behalf of the Historical Society. I'm Rob Wilson, I'm Vice President, I live in North Street. And I just wanted to say that in support of what Meg said earlier, in support of what Mickey was saying about the practicality of all this, our board will win unanimously to support this and we strongly support the concept. But I, I just want to make clear to add on to what Meg said, that Diamondback has been a great place to be and it's been a good place for Meg to work and for some of us to come in and volunteer. And we don't have any complaints about that, um, which doesn't mean we're not in favor of this, but I, I just wanted to say that because, you know, Tim has been a great landlord and, uh, you know, I just wanted the public to know that.
I think that's a worthwhile statement, so thanks.
Thanks.
I mean, it seems to me that if we.
I have a question.
Yep.
Are there any complaints from any citizens in town about the money spent for the lease?
I've never heard one.
I don't think that's probably public knowledge until tonight.
It's been discussed at multiple public meetings.
That shocks me, quite honestly, to be honest. I, I, you know, I.
We had multiple conversations about this, it comes up at budget time, came up, we had, yeah, I've never had anybody complain to me about it. But it seems like, I mean, so the holdup.
Expand over there and have a display area. Rent a larger space and have a display area over there.
Well, I'm not sure about the ongoing public access there. Hang on, Meg, I just have one. So the holdup with this balcony is we can't get somebody in here to give, we're waiting for a proposal.
So you're waiting, and that's, that's the engineering on it or the actual project?
The actual project.
The engineering is done.
The engineering is done.
Oh, have you received something?
You, you have received the engineering?
You have something?
No, he just said the engineering is done.
Okay.
Kyle's contract, uh, contacted contractor.
Okay, so if we're already.
They had a structural win there, correct?
It wasn't completed. And so there, we're just waiting for them? Do they do a collection there and then we can still move on with this? So.
With the new, uh, high-end city rolling storage, that, that could work well. With the existing orange shelves, they, that would, that would be great, but.
But the rolling storage would be heavy enough?
Uh, I mean, it's the same footprint, right? Right now, it's on basically the same rolling shelves, they're just, they need the space out so that you can go, you get the new events that allow you to develop models down, it would be a lot more in the office.
Well, I mean, if you.
Really try to pursue getting that estimate, maybe if that, whoever is waiting from, or we look for another company or something to come in here, because that would be, from the last time, we had to seek out somebody else. I mean, that's just, we could feasibly make that happen fairly quickly. And, I mean, I'm not sure how long, but involved with doing that, but, you know, maybe we'd be able to enter into a little bit, a temporary extension or something with Diamondback while that was going on. But that allows everybody to be happy.
It's always good.
Wouldn't that be nice if we could all be happy at the end of the day? That's what I'm here for, I'm just going to drop the havel on that one. So I, you know, let's, let's see if we can shake that tree a little bit. And I have no idea what we might be talking cost-wise. Phil, would you even like ballpark it?
Kyle and I look at it on occasions. It seems like if you put crossing across by a bit, I mean, how much is that, you know, I mean, it's.
So we're not talking.
We're not talking hundreds of dollars.
Okay. That would be, and that would make you happy to have that space?
I'm not sure of the square footage of that. If I'm off the top of my head, I'm thinking it's about 500.
Oh, Phil, I thought you said it was.
I don't know, I have to roll this, you know, it's. It's the way it steps out.
Yeah, it's bizarre.
Like there's a lot of space.
But there.
And I think if you roll that floor to the left of the wall, it's there. You could get, yeah, it might be more than you think, you know, it might be more than you think.
That'd be impressive.
Cool. All right then. Let's see, let's see what we can.
Should we be on an agenda in a month or should we just wait to hear from the board?
I would say wait to hear what we come up with and, yeah. And if, yeah, okay. Maybe, Phil, you could really pursue this, um, this.
Yeah, I realize you and Kyle were working on it. I know Kyle and I have been working with a contractor.
Kyle and I just had a discussion on how we would level that floor before we want the structure for the years.
I just want, sorry, I know I've said it, but the protection of the collection is very important to me. I'm, I'm pretty sure I speak for my colleagues that we all want to. My very first foray into public service was as a member of the Historical Commission when I was very, very young. Um, so it's, it's, it's important to us, but we, we have, we also have, but we're being pulled, this, this space in this condition would, it would be a shame to just have this be predominantly storage. So we, we've got to find a way to be able to accomplish those things.
But you're right, if the balcony was flat and there could be a storage space in there for that stuff, that would.
Maybe with a mini-split or whatever you need for climate.
Right.
Control.
And that might be, that might be the solution overall.
It still gives you the access to it to be able to do displays on days when maybe there's going to be a lot of people in the building.
That last point is important because there is a little bit of a split at the end of the conversation about what the society needs and rightfully so at this point in time. The commission has spoken of it being, as I mentioned, more of a pop-up exhibition space. Of course, we need the, the cooperation of the society to have that happen, um, because they put on the, all the wonderful things. But, you know, to point, we just adopted the Sophia Smith furniture. And that honestly cannot be put on display unless we have a space like this. So our vision is a little more forward-thinking, we're not quite calling it a museum, but we have talked about calling it exhibition space. So.
Our exhibition halls are always set up so you can rearrange and change things and.
And we have, the water thing about this collection is so much that we can put, put it on exhibit for a year.
Right, and I'm glad you mentioned that because there's so much the town has never seen. And that, as I said, was one of my biggest, strongest points on December 16th, is there's so much the town has never seen and they own the collection. So to have it out there would be really wonderful.
What do you think, Phil?
So it's roughly 560 square feet.
Ah, it's off by 60.
560 and if, like, I'm thinking Diamondback and what my showing situation is there, and there are eight shelving units right now, both items between. And if those events down into a couple hundred to the roll of storage units, so, you know, it would be one increase in space.
All right. So am I right in assuming that it's not going to be put to the town? Are we still going to do that?
Um, well, I think, let's see what we get for an estimate. I would, I would just, oh, I think create some urgency around.
Sure.
Just say, look, we're, we need to figure out if there needs to be a ballot question about this or not.
Well, if we do the balcony, it resolves the issue, right?
Yeah, if it doesn't, then work back to square one and waiting a year for another town vote. So, yeah, timing's not the best. But, um, yeah, because.
But it is somewhere safe and it is somewhere accessible, even if it gets kicked off a year.
I know.
I know that's not what you want to hear, Mickey, but we have to, you know, we.
I understand, I understand. Problem solving is important.
Better things in life take time. Better things in life take time.
You have something?
It's good, it's good that this discussion is being had and hopefully people will see it and there'll be more discussion of townspeople kicking it around and everybody will get more attention.
Yeah, I would, I would love to hear from people about their thoughts on the space.
And like you said, maybe people don't know that exists. Be real fun to see.
Yep.
All right.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Good night. Oh, I have a headache.
Diana, may I just bring up something that refers back to the capital recommendations, capital plans? So we're talking about, um, a project for up here for, you know, developing this into somewhat of a media, you know, conference media area and relocating the cable TV control room. That was submitted to capital planning. Now, we know that funding would come from the Cable Enterprise Fund, but it still requires an authorization to appropriate the funds. So it's still, it was still considered a capital project and it was submitted to capital planning.
It doesn't appear on that list.
No, that's what I'm saying, I don't see on the list.
I would reach out to David maybe about that. Um, we're taking a quick break. Okay, we're back. So we're going to get back into our agenda here. Our next item is the Town Administrator Report. Marlene?
Yeah, so actually, the first bullet on there, future meeting with Finance Committee, actually, that we talked about that, actually, that was moved to topic one when we were talking about the budget. So that's just, yeah, it doesn't need to be there. Just an update, so the Select Board a few weeks ago approved the agreement with the City of Northampton Veteran Services Offices, Office for their services to assist veterans in Hatfield. And I just wanted to let the Select Board know that the Finance Committee met last week and did approve a transfer of money from the Reserve Fund of $4,755, which was, yeah, we had some money in the budget. So, yeah, that gets us through to June 30th.
Good.
Well, that's good. Yeah. The next item, again, is just a quick update on the petition to the Legislature to legalize the use of golf carts in Hatfield. A proposed bylaw and petition has been drafted, and it's currently being reviewed by Town Council.
Okay, that was fast, Marlene. Thank you.
And so the intent is to place an article on the annual town meeting warrant for approval to petition the Legislature.
Okay, great. Thank you for that.
You're welcome. Next, topic seven, Letter of Agreement Between Open Space Committee and Community Preservation. This is for the Pavilion in Smith Academy Park, and just requires the Select Board to vote to accept the letter of agreement, and if the Select Board Chair would authorize, endorse the agreement.
That's why they needed this?
So this was voted last year, annual town meeting. So there was an article on town meeting warrant last year. Initially, it had been a borrowing article that had been authorized a couple of years ago. And, you know, we asked the CPC, Community Preservation Committee, to consider funding that rather than borrowing the money at such a high interest rate. Community Preservation Committee was welcome to fund it, so they did. And with each project, the Community Preservation Commissioner enters into a letter of agreement with the department or town officials that will receive that project.
So this is just customary for all of their projects?
Right. Okay. So this agreement is between the Open Space Committee Select Board and Community Preservation Committee?
All right.
I don't have a problem with it. It's been reviewed by, is this a standard boilerplate thing, or is this something?
Yes, it is. It's boilerplate.
Okay. Take a motion on it.
A motion to accept the letter of agreement between the Open Space Committee and the Committee Preservation for Pavilion at Smith Academy Park.
Second.
And so we sign this? No, this should be signed by Open Space, it says.
Uh...
Oh, it does say Select Board. Oh, I see. All of, both of us do.
Correct.
So a motion made in second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it looks like only my signature is required for that.
Yes, this is the chair.
Okay. Bylaw Review Advisory Committee?
Right, so we had a brief discussion at a previous meeting, and, you know, my recommendation is that this be a five-member appointed committee, and, you know, for your consideration. Well, we, at the previous meeting, we had talked about a representative from the Select Board, and the Town Administrator. So others that are suggested here would be the moderator, and/or the building enforcement officer, and a member-at-large, but that's a seven-member committee.
Why can't we do two members-at-large and make it a seven-member?
You could do that.
Because I think that all of those, you know, all of those particular offices you mentioned makes sense to be there. And obviously, you have to have an odd number on a committee. So I wouldn't want to remove one of those, so if we just ask for two members-at-large...
Two at-large.
Or is there someone else we identify in a, like, in an official town capacity that might need to be on there?
Off the top of my mind, maybe somebody from Historical Commission. Planning Board. I talked with another community. They had more at-large members. They had a Select Board rep, the Town Clerk initially, but the Town Clerk is no longer on that committee. But the initial intent when they created the committee was to go through their bylaws that, as in this situation. But then going forward, any new proposed bylaws, there is a committee that reviews those. The Town Clerk is not on that committee any longer.
Well, then, I say we add another member, another member-at-large, excuse me. So two at-large. That's, that would be my thought of how you... I would be kind of interested in being the Select Board rep on this, but how long of a process is this?
Actually, it took, the other community I talked to took them two years.
Yeah, I would imagine. Yeah. Well, I'll think about that. I mean, it's just probably a lot of meetings.
Mm.
Yeah. But would be a really interesting process and a great result at the end.
Mm-hmm.
So... We're not deciding that, we're just deciding on the structure.
Right, right now, yes, that's what I'm asking.
Think about having it be another, an extra member-at-large. It's a big committee.
I want to think about it.
Yeah, the bigger committee, you start having quorum problems sometimes.
Yeah.
Too many chefs spoil the soup.
But, you know, on that list, I can't really look at that list and think about somebody that wouldn't be on. Hmm. So, can we think about it?
Sure.
Absolutely. I have a squeaky chair, so, sorry. Anything else? Oh, do you want me to, are we done? Because I have those announcements that I...
Yes, I am all set. Thank you.
Ed, do you have anything else?
No, I don't.
Great.
No, I don't.
Okay, so I'm going to backtrack. I missed some things at, when we were doing announcements and everything, that there are some employment opportunities available here in the town of Hatfield. An administrative assistant position, the director of our... is open, an equipment operator slash labor position is open, a library substitute position is open. We're looking for a paraprofessional at the Elementary Star Program. What does this mean, updated treasurer-collector?
The posting was updated.
Oh, so there's been an update. Treasurer-collector, that position remains unfilled. It looks like we are looking for a number of positions up at Smith Academy, coaching positions, baseball, softball, junior varsity and middle school baseball coaches, and a field hockey maintenance worker, a field hockey field maintenance worker, excuse me. And then we continue to hope that we'll find a new veteran services officer here in town. So those are the... ...available now, and information is on our website about all of those. And then we have a number of board and committee vacancies available. There's two seats on the Agricultural Advisory Commission. There's one open seat on Capital Improvement Planning Committee, that's what you heard David Kier put a big plug in for earlier. There's one open seat on our Disability Commission. There's two open seats on our Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund Committee. There's one open seat on the Emergency Management Planning Committee. That's something I did in the past, that's actually a very interesting committee as well. There's one open seat on the Historical Commission. There's 16 open seats.
Yes, that's what I asked. I'm like, is that right?
There's 16 open seats on the Local Cultural Council.
Yeah.
Good grief. There's two open seats on our Open Space Committee, there's two open seats on our Recreation Committee, and there's two open seats on our Zoning Board of Appeals. So that's a lot of board vacancies, and I certainly hope that there's people out there who might feel like they have some worthwhile experience and want to give back to the community. I can tell you, it is very, it feeds our soul, doesn't it, Ed? So I would suggest, if anyone's interested in those, that they look on the website or reach out to Marlene, or the Town Clerk, if you're looking at being on any of those boards. So that's my plug for getting more involved, and thank you. Yeah.
Nothing else, then I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.